Welcome to the July 8th, 13th meeting of the year. Alyssa, please do the presiding statement.
In compliance with Chapter 231, a public law of 1975, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January 5th, 2024, posted on the municipal building bulletin board, the borough website, the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River.
Roll call.
Mayor Gindy?
Here.
Councilman Ballas is out. Councilman Siula?
Here.
Councilman DeZemian?
Here.
Councilman Frost is out. Councilman Kretchinsky?
Here.
Council President Krenzel?
Here.
Please rise for the salute.
..........................................
Please stay standing for Ex-Councilman Ed Chekki. You may be seated. We are going to change the agenda a little bit. We're going to do a proclamation and then we're going to go into executive session. After that, we're going to go into agenda session. Alyssa, proclamation? Which is going to be the 50th anniversary of Trigard Hardware Locksmith. If you could come up. You okay? You sure?
Whereas July 1st, 2024 marks the 50th anniversary of Trigard's Hardware Store in the Borough of South River. And whereas Trigard's Hardware Store is a veteran-spawned business that serves the Borough of South River with friendly customer service and dedication to our residents. And whereas our owner, Ed Trigard, is a homegrown South River citizen who exemplifies all the good things, all good about the municipality's small-town characteristics. And whereas Trigard's Hardware Store is continually giving back to communities, supplying many donations to various groups such as the TNR program. Now therefore, be it the result of Mayor and Council of South River, hereby proclaim July 1st, 2024 as Trigard's Hardware Day in the Borough of South River. Congratulations.
Resolution 2024-246, whereas Section 8 of Chapter 231, Public Law of 1975, permits the exclusion of the general public from a meeting of the governing body under certain circumstances. And whereas the Mayor and Council of the Borough of South River are of the opinion such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it as hereby resolved by the Mayor and Council of the Borough of South River and the County of Middlesex of the State of New Jersey, that the public be excluded upon the here and after specific subject matter, and that such subject matter to be so discussed is as follows: personnel and contract negotiations? Be it further resolved that such record of the above discussion would be made public when confidentiality is no longer required, the Borough Council of the Borough of South River may or may not take formal action at the conclusion of the executive session.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman, Council President Krenzel?
Second.
Second by Councilman Siula.
Councilman Siula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Council President Krenzel?
Yes.
Motion by Council President Krenzel, seconded by Councilman DeZemian.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh. We are going to be adding on to the agenda for consent resolutions, 2024-247, which is going to be the purchase of a new fire truck. Would you like to start off with 2024-29, first reading?
Do you want to talk about them first during the adjournment session?
Actually, I do. Andrea, you'd like to?
Sure, I'll go, I'll go through most of them. Just first, ordinance is on first reading, 24, 29. This ordinance amends Chapter 120, the cannabis ordinance. It amends it to add two retail licenses, and retail as the category licenses. 2024-30, that is also, that's an amendment to the zoning chapter that also has to do with cannabis. It indicates where those two retail licenses, if a licensee comes in and it gets fully approved, the locations and the regulations that would govern that. When you go on to 2024-31, that is an ordinance authorizing a non-binding referendum question to be placed on the ballot to establish a joint land use board. Because your population is over 15,000 residents, you have to go out by referendum to do that. 2024-32, that's an ordinance amending your stormwater management. That's your DEP required changes. 2024-33, I'm not sure if the Deputy Chief wants to do that, but that just concerns police promotions and the promotional process that was requested by the chief. 2024-34, that amends your Chapter 193 entitled Vehicles and Traffic. That ordinance indicates that the parking lot across the street from 48 Washington is to be utilized for municipal business only. I just want to make council aware that there is one revision to that. There was a, there was a mistake in the top section, and I'm just going to get there. I believe it's subsection A. Subsection A, the words "in the rear of the South River Criminal Justice Building" will be removed. 53-55, Washington Street will be, will be included in that one. 2024-35, Art, that is a...
Yes, what this one is, is I had gotten a request from some of the residents. The Uniform Construction Code doesn't require a permit for a pool under 24 inches in depth. Our ordinance had 15. I think it's better off that we are in compliance with the Uniform Construction Code, and it gives the people to get a little better pool for two, you know, 20, below 24 inches.
That's fine.
And the last one is 2024-36. This updates your fee chapter, and it just amends fees for the cannabis licenses.
Before we start, we are moving the meeting from August 12th to August 5th due to one of the ordinances that has to be approved by before August 9th for it to be submitted to the state. Alyssa, can you please start off with 2024-29?
Ordinance 2024-
Look, Mayor, if I just may, on the ordinances, 2024, 29, 30, 36, I feel that I don't have enough information to vote for these, so I am going to give a no vote for those three until we get some new information and update locations, fees, and the ordinance itself with the number of licenses and the percentages.
I've already said where I stand on those, on the ordinances for retail, given the fact that there was a referendum less than a year ago on that. I don't think there's been enough information given to the libation, their views should be overturned, so I would not vote in favor of that. I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
I also would not go in favor of that particular vote because of the referendum that we made and the obligation to the people of the town.
With that said, I say that we table this until the August 5th meeting, and we'll have a full report on exactly what this consists of and how this would benefit the town, the type of tax revenue, as well as prices that would come with it.
They wouldn't be cooling it from the agenda?
That's correct. We'll table it.
What ordinances were they?
2024-29, 2024-30, and 2024-36.
Ordinance 2024-31, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, authorizing a non-binding referendum question be placed on the general election ballot for 2024 relative to establishing a joint land use board.
Motion away the full reading?
Second.
This is just the first reading. It's only done by title only.
Okay, motion is adopted.
No.
Motion, I'll make a motion that the council pass ordinance 2024-31 on its first reading by title only, and a clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held 7:00 PM on August 5th, 2024 by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Siula, seconded by Council President Krenzel.
You have to have the magic.
Councilman Siula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Council President Krenzel?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-32?
Ordinance 2024-32, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 295 entitled Subdivision and Site Plan Review Stormwater Management.
Mayor, I'll move that the council pass ordinance 2024-32 on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at 7:00 PM on August 5th, 2024 by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Siula, seconded by Councilman DeZemian.
Councilman Siula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Council President Krenzel?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-33?
Ordinance 2024-33, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 72 entitled Public Safety Department of.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance 2024-33 on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at 7:00 PM on August 5th, 2024 by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey. Second.
Motion by Councilman Siula, seconded by Councilman DeZemian.
Councilman Siula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Council President Krenzel?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-34?
Ordinance 2024-34, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 193 entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance 2024-34 on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at 7:00 PM on August 5th, 2024 by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey. Second.
Motion by Councilman Siula, seconded by Councilman DeZemian.
Councilman Siula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Council President Krenzel?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-35?
Ordinance 2024-35, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 300 entitled Swimming Pools Private.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance 2024-35 on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at 7:00 PM on August 5th, 2024 by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey. Second.
Motion by Councilman Siula, seconded by Councilman DeZemian.
Councilman Siula?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Council President Krenzel?
Yes.
We are going to go into reports. Bruce?
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. The 2023 and 2024 road projects are being advertised on Thursday. We were going to, so we'll receive bids, and then we're going to have to do that quickly for the, I'm going to have to check that against the August 5th meeting with the shift. I'll have to see if we can reset. I'm trying to remember what the bid date is, but, so I will get back to you on that one. The 2025 local aid, we submitted the applications for that. 2023 transportation project grants, we submitted a proposal for that. The substation, the load tap changer in T6 is not functioning properly, but the guys are, we were going to do it with this hot weather. Didn't make sense to take the transformer out, so we're waiting for the weather to cool off a bit so they can take it apart and see what's wrong. And that's really it.
Thank you. Is there anything for Bruce? Thank you, Bruce. Art, you want to take on Joe's report?
Yeah, the only thing I have is, on Wednesday, we're receiving our first delivery of caustic. We'll be running tests with caustic through the new system, and once that's done, approved by DEP, that new chemical system will be operating. And the other thing, there's going to be a notice on the webpage and probably a Nixle starting on Wednesday, a company by the name of Valve Tech will start exercising the valves in the north end area of town before we do the reverse flushing. So if you see a truck, we don't expect any problems with discoloration, but we put the notice out anyway, these valves need to be tested before they can do the reverse flush. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything for Bruce? I mean, Bruce, for Joe? Or Art? Deputy Chief?
Evening, Mayor, Borough Council. We would like to let you know that we graduated proudly 20 new cadets from the Junior Police Academy on Friday, June 28th. Also want to let the community know that if they're going out of town over the summer months, that on our website for the Police Department, there's an unoccupied residence form. They can complete this form, submit it to the Police Department, and our officers will check their house, keep a log of one of us checked, so that's something that they can take advantage of. We'd also like to invite the community to National Night Out at South River's 14th National Night Out, taking place Tuesday, August 6th, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. At St. Mark's Christian Academy, the rear lot of AD David Street. And finally, we are currently hiring a police officer. It can be a certified police officer, so an officer from another agency, or an officer who has completed the Police Academy, has a BCP, a Basic Course for Police Officers. They can apply here to the South River Police Department up until Friday, this next, this Friday at 4 o'clock PM. PoliceApp.com, they can receive our background packet, otherwise they can go onto the South River Police Department website and download the application there. Applications are received 24 hours a day, however, they must be submitted by Friday, this, this Friday, coming Friday, by 4:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything for Deputy Chief? Fire Chief?
All right, there we go. Mayor and Council, I believe we're sitting tight at roughly 250 alarms per year, could be more than that. All apparatus are currently in service with Engine, I'm sorry, Engine 3 is out right now with an early. Engine 4, once Engine 3 comes out, will probably go out of service again for oil as usual. That is the engine that's supposed to be replaced, that I believe that's the resolution you discussed.
Correct.
Through this whole process, the Truck Committee consisted of pretty much a lot of ex-chiefs, four ex-chiefs and myself, all of whom were on the previous Truck Committee of Engine 3, which is at Seagrave as well. We were very transparent through this process, answered any of your questions, invited you all in for meetings, had you have an understanding of what the apparatus was. It's far from custom, all right? It's pretty much a cookie cutter with a couple tweaks to it, and it's built for the needs of South River. If I showed you what we wanted, it'd be well more than what you're looking at right now. I did bring in ourselves from Seagrave to answer any of your questions. To my knowledge, that some people thought that me bringing up the fact that if we don't act on this is, was a threatening manner. It wasn't a threatening manner. The inflation is that bad that within 30 days, the price goes up roughly $30,000. Yes or no? Another piece of information here, we were, we spent $10,000 on a consultation, correct? Five-year plan?
Correct.
All right. So I want to go back to lord knows how much money you spent on the previous consultation. Now, I know most of you weren't on that, Mayor and Council, but you all play a part in some part of party, whether you're Democrat, Republican, or Independent, all right? Change of seats, you still have an obligation to the residents. The last five-year plan, Engine 4 was supposed to be replaced in 2016. 2016. If we go back to as far as beginning of March 2023, sitting down with a budget committee, we discussed that I was not getting a new engine. I was not amazed, the department, we were not getting a new engine because the town needed a new street sweeper. Well, you got your new street sweeper, and you're still leaking oil, and you still have other apparatus after this one to replace. Going on to March of 2023, Truck Committee sat down with Seagrave, and it was a cost of $900,000. We waited, and we told you that if we wait longer, the price will go up. Inflation, I understand that there's a process, readings, bonding, I get that. All right? I'd really appreciate if you vote this as a yes today, and we can take care of an apparatus that's failing, all right? And eventually move on to the next piece that has to be replaced. Thank you for your time.
One question?
Yes?
How old is the one that you're replacing?
It'll be coming up on 30 years. 30 years, 1994. 1994.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
94. 93, 94, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Well, if I may, just so we can stick with the bid opening date, Andrea, we'll just have to be on a little shorter timeframe, but I'll turn it around quickly and get it over to you electronically.
Okay.
And would ask that you tentatively schedule a spot on your agenda for an award for that meeting, okay?
Okay.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you. Andrea?
There's nothing, I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alyssa?
Nothing tonight.
Art, anything else you want to add?
The only other thing that I'd want to go over is, on the consent resolution tonight, you have 236, which is authorizing cooperative pricing agreement. This is another co-op that we're using to be able to take care of number 239, which is authorizing the Daily Field Ballstopper, which is a netting operation, so when they play this fall for soccer, they don't kick the soccer ball into Dally's pond. Number 238, it's authorizing the purchase installation of camera systems that Dally's park is going to cover the soccer field and the new playground, use their specialized cameras because they're in the electric down there that is on all the time, the lights are only on the electric when the lights are on. Solar-powered cameras, and this will give us better surveillance. We've been having some issues with the soccer field that we spent $150,000 to re-sod, even using it for fireworks, people have been riding on it. This is not a deterrent for us to watch it all the time, but when we get a report that it happened, we'll be able to go and find the perpetrators and take action. And the playground, of course, is a wonderful playground that we just put in, and we feel that since we're doing this, at the same time, it might as well throw a couple of cameras on the playground just to make sure there isn't any vandalism. I believe that's it.
Anything for Art? Councilman Siula, you have anything?
No, nothing at this time.
Councilman DeZemian?
Rec Department update, 286 participants registered. 75 participants are registered for classes after summer rec. Cheerleading 16, art 23, tennis 20, soccer 16. Competitive cheerleading, varsity cheerleading participants, that's 35. Impact cheerleading, that's 30. Summer 2024 and Fall 2024 signups. Football camp registration classes on July 21st, and Pop Warner Football Registration Classes on August 1st. Age groups are nine, nine, let's see, it's 12 and 13, 10, 11, and 9, and there's flag football. And to register, go to the Civic Rec page within the Borough website. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Kretchinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing that I have on the Office on Aging is to please go out there and get your no-knock registry forms. Solicitators are coming around right now too, and just to keep you from running out the front door or being converged into doing something that you don't really have right now, it's a good chance to put the decal on the front window and avoid some of the hassles. Also that the Office on Aging will be closed on early, at 12:00 PM on the 26th. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Krenzel?
I have nothing.
I'll be holding mine. I am opening it up to the public. You have 10 minutes, state your name and your address.
Good evening, everyone. Joe Donato, I live here in South River. I'm here with two hats again tonight, County of Middlesex, as well as me as a resident. I just want to let you know that Main Street Improvement Project, I'm told, was put before the state for approval. We're talking about maybe two, three months, and we'll be able to put that out to bid, provided nothing happens. And I'm keeping my fingers crossed on that, so I promised I'd keep you advised, as I found out, and I'm doing so. My question is about the beacons, the crosswalk beacons in front of the C M Center. Where do we stand on that?
We're in the process of doing the purchase order for the replacements. We have to get three quotes. Little difficult finding three companies that do that, you know? But we can't, if we can't find it, we can say that the companies weren't interested. I would expect it to be awarded probably the next council meeting.
Great, great. Yeah, I figured, yeah, I'll ask. That's all that I have. Is there any questions that anyone has about something that's going on that the county's connected with that I can maybe look into and get some information? Or are we pretty much good right now?
Good.
For the moment?
Streetlights are done on the bridge.
Hmm, good.
Streetlights are done on the bridge.
I was gonna, I was just gonna mention that, it's a good thing. Again, it's not the county, unfortunately.
No, no, I know. I was out there with them.
Oh, you were out there with them?
I was out there with them.
Are they on? Because I've had the opportunity to know they are.
They're on, they're on.
Oh, in that case, great.
Thank you.
We'll see how long.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully long.
We've had problems, and when we redid the approaches to the bridge years ago, we're not, no sooner did we finish it, there was a contractor out there digging in the area where those lines were.
Yeah, they cut the line.
I freaked out. I saw them, and I stopped by, and I got rid of the riot act, because they didn't have any authorization to be there, and they didn't know where the lines were, so obviously, here we go again, they're going to knock out the darn lights in the approaches. Anyway, I asked, I went through the open requests, and I asked, this is on personal nature, I asked for some information. One was about the professional services for the feasibility and technical feasibility of the water main replacement, and I did get, I asked for a number of things, but I did get the proposal from CDM Smith, from Agra, and I'm assuming the one from CME may have been the base proposal, or did CME actually submit a proposal for that as well? It was, it wasn't clear to me.
It's submitted.
No, I think they submitted as proposal.
They did?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Does that... That answers some of the other questions I had for the information, because that wouldn't be available. Okay. The word of B. N. M. Construction Company was another one that I asked for that was Resolution twenty twenty-four one fifty-four. And what I got was the B. N. M. Construction Proposal, which is for emergency services throughout the town for the year. Wasn't this specific, and since it was a sanitary sewer and it collapsed in two locations, I guess that is considered sort of an emergency, so I could understand why it was done. So that is... That is terrific. Just want to let you know, I did ask, and I did get stuff back, and this is my interpretation, and I... If I'm wrong, please, someone yell and say you're wrong. Finally, the municipal resolution for C. M. E. Associates for the preliminary design of a recreational center at Grekowski Park. I was... I asked some questions during the meeting about the location, since it's Green Acres, and I was told that it's going to be outside the Green Acres.
Right.
I was also told it's going to be outside the...
Wetlands.
The wetlands.
Yep.
And so on and so forth. And I did receive a drawing, which I looked at it. To me, it was a... To me, it's not a drawing that showed me anything other than it was prepared for discussion purposes.
Right.
Okay. Piqued my interest, and I figured, well, let me take a look at this. So I did. And what I found was... And these are recorded documents at the clerk's office, okay? I found a document for Green Acres Grant Contract, which was deed book in page four, so it's online. Also found a Green Acres Development Grant Contract, which was one that came later on. Both documents clearly indicate that every park in this town is Green Acres or under a program. So no matter where you put it, it's going to have to go through their approval process, just to let you know. I'm not being the bad guy here, okay?
I hear you.
I'm not busting people's tails. And then I further took a look at it because the drawing brought to my attention there's something going on in the back, the back area. You have a base, there's a baseball field and structured in the back. And looking at the tax maps, lo and behold, those properties back there are County of Middlesex. Okay, well, the town would not have built on the property without certain agreements or permissions. So out of curiosity, I took a look at that. This is my town, so of course I'm concerned. And we went back and forth. I did sell a couple letters through the town to let them know what was going on. And lo and behold, I find information basically that the county purchased it. It was... It seems like it was in conjunction with the town at the time to develop that park. So the county bought that, those properties, and behold, they gave a lease to the town for one dollar, for at least thirty, maybe thirty acres or so in the back. But the lease was for nineteen years. Well, the lease began in two thousand and one. Nineteen years. So the point I'm trying to make is we should... The town should go forward and renew that lease. We can't do anything back there. We're not going through the county anyhow, but since you don't have a lease to do anything in back anymore, we want to, you know, cover those legal problems that may arise. I don't think... I personally don't think the town's going to have a problem to get an extension on the lease. Do something like, oh, fifty years, a hundred years, or something like this, so that way you don't have to worry about that again. But as far as I can tell, and the people I spoke to, they have no renewal of that lease, so it expired in twenty twenty.
Good to know. Andrea, can you look into this, please?
Take a look at it.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you.
That's it. I'm not the bad guy.
No, I'm happy you brought it to our attention. But any project that we bring to this town, we're going to have to... We're going to have to look at every possible permission, whatever must be done.
It's recreational center is part of the recreational program, which I don't see any reason why it can't be approved by everybody that's involved, because it's got to be used for consistent purpose.
Correct.
So I personally don't see any problem with it, but something like that could be flying like that. We don't want that to happen.
No, I hear you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
No.
No? Okay.
Anybody else for public? First call, second call, third call?
Make a motion to close public?
Motion by Councilman Kren... Sorry, Seola, seconded by Councilman Kroschinsky.
All in favor?
Aye.
We do have two meri-ole appointments. One is for Environmental Shade and Tree Commission Advisory Board. We are just moving members around. Sherri White now will become a regular member. And for the planning board, there are three. Nick Janikopoulos is going to be moved to Class Four. Jess O'Hara... O'Hara is going to be moved to Alternate Run One, and Monica Almeida is going to be moved to Alternate Two. Alyssa, can you please read out the consent resolutions?
Whereas Resolution twenty twenty-four oh one authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore be it is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole, as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions twenty twenty-four two twenty-six to twenty twenty-four two forty-five and twenty twenty-four two forty-seven. Two twenty-six, granting renewal to A. B. C. licenses for the twenty-four twenty-five license year. Two twenty-seven, property tax refund. Two twenty-eight, authorizing turnover of tax sale certificate number nineteen dash zero 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 nine. Two twenty-nine, authorizing the requisition of funds for payment to the custodian of the school monies. Two thirty, resolution authorizing a block party. Two thirty-one, resolution amending the appointment of the tax assessor's term dates. Two thirty-two, approval to submit a grant application for the N. J. D. O. T. Two thirty-three, authorize vehicle auction. Two thirty-four, authorizing permanent status to police officer to Brett Glinka. Two thirty-five, authorizing permanent status to police officer to Kyle Jensen. Two thirty-six, authorizing cooperative pricing agreement. Two thirty-seven, authorizing change order number one for the product known as the installation of a traffic signal. Two thirty-eight, authorize the purchase and installation of a camera system at Daley's Park. Two thirty-nine, authorizing daily field ball stopper. Two forty, authorize certain utility refunds. Two forty-one, authorizing fireworks display for South River Recreation on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Two forty-two, support for suitability of cannabis business Garden River Incorporated. Two forty-three, appoint zoning board of adjustment member. Two forty-four, accept June tenth, twenty twenty-four, regular and executive session minutes. Two forty-five, authorize the bills and claims list. And two forty-seven, resolution authorizing the purchase of a new fire apparatus through Seagrave Fire Apparatus L. L. C.
Council, what is your motion?
So moved the resolution.
Okay. Motion by Council President Krenzel, seconded by Councilman DeZemian.
Councilman Seola?
Uh, yes, with the extension from two forty-five, numbers twenty-three dash zero three one six one, zero three one six two, zero three three one eight, zero three four two eight, twenty-four dash zero one eight six seven, zero one four eight eight, zero one one two three, zero one five two zero, and from Resolution two forty-seven.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Council President Krenzel?
Yes.
Thank you. Executive was already done. We are going to go into governing body comments. Councilman Kroschinsky?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to thank all of our public safety workers, our police, fire, Robert Wood Johnson. We had a wonderful fourth, a bit on the warm side, and it's still going to be warm for the next few days, so look in on your neighbors, make sure that they're okay. No one's in any dire straits or anything. And be cool. Have a nice weekend. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman DeZemian?
Nothing other than the National Night coming up in August. That's it.
Councilman Seola?
Okay, just want to touch again on the no-knock ordinance that Councilman Kroschinsky brought up. On South River Day, we signed up over a hundred residents for the no-knock ordinance. Basically, what it is, is once you sign up, you get a decal for your front door. You mount it on your front door, and no solicitor is allowed to knock on your door. There will be a fine issued if they do. What you have to do is call police headquarters, and an officer will come out. Down the Office on Aging, I attended one of their meetings, and everyone down there signed up for it. So if you know of anybody, or you need it yourself, please come down to the clerk's office, see our Borough Clerk, and she will get you to fill out the paperwork. It's four lines. You sign it, and she'll give you a sticker right then and there for your front door. And with that, Mayor, it's all I have.
Thank you. Council President?
Everybody said everything, so stay cool.
I have one announcement. Fireworks will be held on August sixteenth, which is going to be at the school. At six o'clock, there is going to be a luau show. Please come out. It's going to be pretty interesting to see a lot of flame throwing. Other than that, please stay cool, check on your neighbors. It's extremely hot outside. That's all I have. Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Seola, seconded by Councilman DeZemian.
All in favor?
Aye.